Good evening. Welcome to the City of Swift Current Council Meeting for this 26th day of July 2021. And before I go any further, I want to say it's nice to see us back to normal. None of us new ones on council are used to this exact configuration, but it's very nice and it's nice to see some people actually in the audience instead of just on Zoom. So anyway, that's, that's all for me. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Your worship, I wish to amend the agenda to include a report regarding J and P Bartle Investments LTD Debt Settlement Agreement under Items for Action, as well as the second and third reading for Bill Number 182016 as listed in bylaws.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will be therefore looking for a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Your worship, I'll move that we adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Counselor Friesen. The Secondar?
I will second that, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Christensen. Are there any questions or comments from council? If not, this motion was moved by Counselor Friesen and seconded by Counselor Christensen. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This motion is passed. Next, may I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the June 28, 2021 council meeting?
Actually, I've left it on, Counselor Wall, so I'll take it. Your worship, I move we adopt the minutes of the council meeting held on June 28, 2021.
Thank you, Counselor Christensen.
I will second that, your worship.
I appreciate that, Counselor Wall. Any questions or comments? Anybody wish to speak? If not, this motion has been moved by Counselor Christensen, seconded by Counselor Wall. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This motion is passed. Next, may I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the special council meeting held on July 5, 2021?
Your worship, I'll be happy to move the adoption of those minutes from our special council meeting on July 5, 2021.
Thank you, Counselor Pless. I'll second your worship. Thank you, Counselor Schweitzer. Any comments or questions on those? If not, moved by Counselor Pless and seconded by Counselor Schweitzer. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Thank you. This motion is passed. We have a proclamation this evening. Joining us is Kimmy Duzan, Regional Director, and Candace Toma, Community Relations Coordinator of Saskability Swift Current Branch, to reclaim August 15 through 21, 2021 as Saskabilities Awareness Week. Welcome to the council, Kimmy and Candace. Please proceed with your presentation.
Wonderful. I'm really glad you arranged the pandemic and all the changes for us to be in person. It is very kind of you to do all of that, and I wanted to say hello, Mayor and Council, Administration, staff, and Matthew and Scott, not to be left out. This is what it looks like, and we're back. And it's such a cool thing. And, and some of you might remember, maybe it's a good thing, maybe not. This is my, my pleasure to be here. My goodness, it's my seventh time. How the heck did that happen? I came in August of 2015. And before I officially started, I might add, I participated in the Being Senior Transit consultation. So I got right in there. And so it's, it's pretty cool to be here. As you know, Saskabilities' mission is to support people experiencing disability with programs and services to enhance their lives. I know that Mr. Minkin reminds you of that every time there's a contract renewal that benefits our community, but also benefits Saskabilities, which ultimately flows out to our community. And I'm always, I always say, if you're watching, shh, 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 Mitch, Mitch, Mitch is saying it, no. And it is pretty cool because Saskabilities, provincially, we serve tens of thousands of folks who experience disability. And just by way of an update, I'll run through a few odds and ends that relates to the work that we do. As far as recreational and volunteerism programming for adults, last year, we provide more virtual than not services. But the cool thing about virtual services, the rural reach, what was available, we were, had people signing in from Elrose, Gull Lake, Herbert. One, one person was from Outlook. So about 73 people participate, adults who experience disability in our day program. Also, on the recreation side, we typically have about 20 kids and adults, young adults that participate in our recreation leisure programs. There's summer, thus the pictures, and also year round. Last year, there was such a demand, our services grow again for the kids' summer program from 20 to 43. And again, there wasn't many opportunities, but we were really grateful for the word of mouth that, that went around our community and told people. And also last year, our employment services, we reached and connected with 1,000, more than 1,000 job seekers and many employers, because that's the, that's the beauty of that, bringing those parties together. Special needs equipment also is about connecting with clients or people who experience disability. And 3,000 pieces of equipment come and came and went from the Swift Current Special Needs Equipment Depot. And of course, as you can imagine, that could be some of the same people, or maybe a drop off and then, or a pickup and then a drop off for cleaning and maintenance. So if you just think of people who experience disability, here in southwest Saskatchewan, we connect, just working those numbers a bit to give you an idea, about 2,700 people. And, and some of that was a little greater during the pandemic, some of it was a little less. So I'm really proud to share that number and our, and our footprint, if you like. We got our fingers in a lot of pies. We continue to do confidential shredding, and that's, we're, as we're working with local businesses to use the services Saskabilities provides and use a local service provider. Commercial sewing, that's always an interesting thing that we, maybe a well-kept secret, because really only those that are looking to buy carrier bags or seed bags, companies across Western Canada would be in touch. And we make about 4,200 products a year that are sold. And again, another opportunity for employment for persons who experience disability. So of the 4,200 products we might make and sell each year, well, more than half of those are for Baco Rem. We make custom canvas pieces, the hoppers for Baco Rem, that would, well, I guess be shipped wherever their equipment is shipped, which you know is quite extensive. So just also by way of update, SARCAN is continuing to manage a backlog of containers. How many people, how long will people stand and wait in the sun for containers and for the return on their containers? And we're really proud of that team as they work through that backlog and also a recipient of the SCBEX Award, Employer Persons with Disabilities. So if you think I'm boasting, I am, because I can and I might and I will. Also, near and dear to, to your hearts is the funding provided for transit services. And just by way of a tidbit, for the regular service outside of the accessible service, we're at about 85% of where we were for this first six months of the year compared to 2019. So that's not a bad recovery. On the accessible service side, we're at about 45% of what we typically served transportation passengers from January to June. Now, if you think about those that use accessible transit are a bit more vulnerable, maybe have some medical issues coming and going from different facilities. So they really haven't been encouraged or maybe even allowed to do more, but that, there's a nice comeback, and I'm seeing growth here month to month. And also, another area that you folks work so closely and, and entrust with us to operate is the recycle depot. And again, doing a, a quick comparison, we're at about 67% of where we were in 2019. And we're now resuming assisting customers. And that was always a concern. What about the materials? What, would there be some contaminants there that could lead to some illness or sickness? So just by way of update, we have about a $3.4 million budget, 65 employees, and 15 of those employees have barriers to employment. And we're pretty proud of our track record, because that's what we ask all of you to do. Your businesses, the, the city, is to be inclusive in your employment practices, and we know that's coming along pretty nicely. So those are some odds and ends of where we're at today. During the pandemic, as in the awareness that's grown over the last few months, we know that mental health and wellness continues to become a challenge. And it's continued to be talked about and understood as stigma is falling away. And that's a cool thing, a very cool thing. So we had the opportunity for those staff that worked onsite during the pandemic, resources to provide some mental health supports and training for them, also some additional supports to our clients. It's a scary thing for all of us, and we were really pleased to do that. Where we stepped up and did something, I think, unique or different, has to do with funding that we received that specifically was targeted towards individuals between the ages of 18 and 30, often those that we would encounter at Partners in Employment, job seekers that, that could really benefit from some support. Brunswick Creek Psychological Services recently had their open house in connection with a chamber on tap, and they were one of the key partners that we partnered with. And over the six-month period from the beginning of, of this current year, we partnered with organizations, the College, Great Pla, pardon me, the, the Center and, and the Family Resource Center, Sask Health, to come together. And we were in contact with about 170 young people in that age group that benefited from additional mental health supports. So a pretty exciting time, and we contracted with the, the providers to provide sessions in talk therapy, financial literacy, that was done by RBC, journaling, art therapy, and, and more. So there was 48 sessions offered to 170 people. So that's a little bit outside of what we have done, but the need was there. And when there's a need, for me, there's an opportunity. So that's something that's new with Saskabilities. I know I've heard a saying that I liked, and I think about it when I think of the partnerships and the opportunities for supporting young people, particularly young people with mental health challenges and their wellbeing, is don't create the wheel, just put more air in the tires. And I love that, because we don't have to throw out what's been established, we can build upon it. And I think that creates efficiency and probably some effectiveness. So in a minute, I'm going to ask Candace to talk a little bit about a fundraising project, but I'd like to sum up by really recognizing what, the few things that I know about each of you, that I know about who you are and what you believe. And I know all of you in different ways or different capacities, and some not so much. But I know that you're employer champions, you're business supporters, you use your own individual time to open up your, and your resources to open up doors for people. We hear all about inclusion, the efforts of this group, playgrounds, recreational facilities. One good thing happens after another. So to quote a few people and things that are coming up and, and common values, I would say, as we, we do well when we come together. Leanne's not here, that's her line. But, and we know that when we come together, we're better together. And we know that we're just all happy to be a part of this community. And those are all quotes from, from some of you that came to mind. And each of you contribute in different ways, and even on a personal level. There's connections within family, within community, that you, that, that I know go beyond what, what you have to do, is what we want to do and how we're motivated in this community. So I, I can't resist sharing, boasting, and I'm excited to do that as part of our Recognition for Awareness Week, really creating awareness for the community, but, and also the services that Saskabilities provides. So Candace, a few more words, please.
Sure. It's, it's hard to follow up Kimmy's excitement, so I'm just going to do my best. But certainly, we really appreciate the opportunity to speak today, tonight, and thanks to the guests for sitting there and listening. You're going to be hearing lots more about Saskabilities in the news and on social media the next couple of weeks as we launch into our second annual Walk Wheel Run campaign, which is an inclusive fundraiser that we had pivoted toward last year in the midst of a pandemic, when we thought, oh darn, we can't have the 33rd Annual Ability Bowl, so what are we going to do? We did an inclusive fundraiser wherein everyone with any ability could participate in whatever way they felt comfortable doing so. So we had surfers, we had people running, someone ran a half marathon, and it wasn't me, so power to them. We had walkers, we had wheelchairs, we had wheelchair racers. It was just, it was awesome. And honestly, it was an opportunity for people to get together in their little cohort bubbles and participate safely. And we're promoting, of course, Active Living. Kimmy spoke about the mental health piece. We all know that Active Living is such a giant component of mental wellness as well. So we're really looking forward to doing that again this year. We did chat with the social bowl, the new owners of the bowling alley here in town, and we want to give them a shout out, because they're so willing to work with us. It's just unfortunate that with the timing of April this year, things were kind of not, things were still up in the air at that point. So we're looking forward to working with them in the future as well, and they've done such a great job taking over from Judy, with whom we've had such a longstanding relationship. So this year, Walk Wheel Run, we're doing it again, August 14 to 28. And I, I certainly know that there's lots of people around this table who have donated in past, and we certainly appreciate that. We know there's some people who have participated in the past, so we're looking forward to that. And certainly, I'm not going to single anybody out, not going to put you in the hot seat about that, but we, we certainly challenge you all to participate within your, within your families, as council, what have you, and just get out and have fun and get, get moving, I guess. Those online and offline donations are going to be available, so all that information will be on our website at abilitybowl.ca. Kept the same handle, we're going to be using it again in the future, figured we wouldn't repurpose it. But we know that there's lots of community spirit out there. We had donations last year from across North America, and we're expecting to have that same uptake again. And we are just so grateful for all of the support that we received, not only here in the city of Swift Current, but as Kimmy mentioned, throughout southwest Saskatchewan. So we want to thank you for your time, and I'll have Madam Clerk play a quick video, because this says it more than I can.
[laughing] It's meeting new people. It's eating yourself. It's exploring. It's being active. It's having fun. It's community. It's creating something to share with others. It's learning new things. It's a place that feels like home. It's being a part of something that's bigger than you. It's getting involved with the people who mean the most. It's building inclusive communities for people of all abilities. Visit on SCAbilities on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram.
And that concludes what we have to offer, and thank you again.
Well, thank you very much, Candace and Kimmy. And I might conclude what you have to offer, but I'm thinking there might be some questions, so I hope you don't mind. I, I do want to say before we start, I can't believe it's been seven years. I remember when you came, and I thought it was maybe two or three years ago, Kimmy. Maybe it's the gray hair, time flies or something, but seven years.
[inaudible] 2015. Yeah, time does fly when you're having fun and working hard. I would add that as well. Thank you.
Okay. Anyway, I, I would like to open the floor to any of council that have any questions or comments. Counselor Wall, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. On a personal note, we have a grandson that is, that has some challenges. And when I say that, everybody around this table has challenges. It's not to, to debase them, but he's come a long ways. The taxi picks him up. He lives about 20 miles of our town. The taxi picks him up, and he's so excited, especially the bowling. He's so excited. And, and he loves everybody. And thank you for the work that you do. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wall. Those are kind words, and it's a pleasure to know your grandson. And we, he does tell me about his fishing experiences with his uncle, and there's a few things going on there, but thank you kindly.
Anybody else? Counselor Schweitzer, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, your worship. It's, it's always awesome to have you two here. You both speak so eloquently and passionately about the work that you do, and it's, it's always an enlightening presentation. You, you touched on the new mental health services, not so much just for clients, but for community members as well. Is, is that correct? And maybe I could just get you to speak a little bit more on that, if, if you don't mind.
Well, thank you. We're excited to speak about it. The need became evident as we interacted with young people in particular. The need is, is available beyond young people. There's just no doubt about it. And we have some great programs and services. Sometimes people need help finding them, but we decided that if we could get a few dollars, which we were pleased to get in the short term, that was from Cameco, related to mental health, that we would arrange those services and opportunities and partnering with others. So yeah, there, there was a great opportunity. And, and really, just to give you an idea, referrals came from Child and Youth, Family Interagency, the Ministry of Social Services, Justice, the Family Resource Center, the, the, the Mental Health Team with Sask Health. So it was, it was just like, put the word out, it's fall. So we went kind of through our network of CBOs, if you like, community-based organizations to reach out. We did also advertise it on social media, and it didn't take much. And some of these people, I'm quite sure, will dovetail and/or are already participating in the employment programs. So we're, we're working, we're looking to develop more and more opportunities in the community. And we've, we've, we obtained some funding to do something similar, again, on a short-term basis, starting in fall. And so we, we, wherever we can find two nickels, we'll rub them together and make something happen. And we're very excited, because it's also quite efficient, right? You're not starting a new organization, it's running under, over, you know, our, our admin, through our administration and all of that. So it was, it is, was open to anyone ages 18 to 30. And so far, we were able to meet the demand. So that might answer a bit of your question.
Yes, that totally answers my question. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. Thank you for your interest.
Go ahead, Counselor Pless.
Thanks, your worship. Well, I can't pass up the chance to say hello. I likewise have a hard time believing it's been seven years. I remember when you first presented to council, and I was excited to have you leading this organization, because it's a very important organization in our community that does some really phenomenal work. And, you know, I think I say this every time, that when, when I first ran for council, I talked a lot about partnerships and how that, you know, that's the grease that makes this wheel turn, and a community is our size, is we need to do things together. And, and you guys have become masters of that, and, you know, you know, were examples of that when I was running for council, of the sorts of things that I wanted to see more of in our community. So, you know, one thing I tell my kids all the time is, you can't always, you can't always choose what happens to you, but you can 100% choose how you respond to that. And I think you guys have shown, you know, some real resilience in, in that this last year. And I want to say thanks for doing that, because, you know, we have options. When hard things happen to us, we have options. You can sit on your hands, and you can complain, and you can whine and feel sorry for yourself, or you can get those hands busy and get them dirty and get them working to, to make something better. So I want to say thank you to you guys for not just seeing a challenge, but also seeing an opportunity and, and making the most of it, because your organization serves our community in a great way, and it's not boasting if it's true. So I just, I just want to say thank you for all that you guys are doing. It's not unnoticed, and we very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Wonderful words.
Counselor Friesen, I seen you reaching for the mic there, too. Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. I won't take long. I, I agree with all the comments that have been made so far about the excellent work that you do in our community and how much we do appreciate it. And especially you two personally, I need to thank you for the leadership you provide and your enthusiasm. It's always a treat to talk to you and listen to you talk about your programs and services. So, so we really do appreciate you as individuals and the work that your organization does. I was interested in, I have a question regarding the special needs equipment that you talked about. I know it's there, I, I've heard that before, but is it, who's it available to? And is there a cost? And just give us a little more detail about that.
Well, the, the, the system really relies on occupational therapists, physicians, for identifying what's needed, what type of equipment, and, and the best way to get it. And there is no cost. And I can tell you, you know, I have to admit it now, that I lived in Alberta for a few years. And, and I can tell, when my parents were in Moosehead and they needed equipment, I was very glad I wasn't, they weren't in Alberta, because there was nothing available. People could borrow, garage sale, and then they're not, the equipment isn't fit, it isn't sized for the person, it may or may not be appropriate. So I think there's a, a great opportunity for us. And sometimes it's just for someone's had surgery, they need someone. Sometimes it's palliative. Like when they, in the heat of the pandemic, we were only doing services for hospital discharge and palliative to try and keep people, well, lack of a better word, moving through the system, because some people were moving out of hospital and other people were hopefully peacefully passing. So I think that it, it is available, and it's best to refer to a physician who will then work with an occupational or physical therapist to identify what's needed and how to use it. So there's really a whole wraparound support there. And we handle thousands and thousands of pieces of equipment across the province, but it's even amazing just what goes through Swift Current, to our region. And again, it's something we don't talk about, and it's something you might not know. One of our own staff had an injury, and her is , and says, well, how are suppose, people supposed to know about this? Well, usually you rely again on the medical professionals, but it's the kind of thing, when you need it, you really need it. Like air conditioning this summer, if you need it, you really need it. If you need that piece of equipment, you really need it, because it's, we all know, staying, people staying in their home is huge for their quality of life, and that's what equipment does. And it really, again, goes back to the heart of our mission, supporting people who experience disability, whether that be short-term or long-term, or regardless of the kind. Yeah. I, I often don't throw it in, but I thought I would.
Thank you very much. Any, if there's no other questions here, I do, I mean, the, the equipment, 3,000 pieces, I was quite surprised, you know, just down the back alley there. And I know I've been in there several times over the past few years for, for family members and friends, and it's, it's definitely appreciated. We do have a proclamation signed here, and I, I'd like to do a photo op. I'm not sure if I should, should I sit down or come around? Come around. Are you okay? If I have no mask, or would you like me to go get one?
No.
Are you fine? So if you want to, if you'd like to come up, please?
We actually have, we have media with us today.
Thank you. And thank you for talking about our company.
That's very kind of you.
Now, do you want the rose between teeth?
Yeah, I might bust out in song, but you won't be, I'm just going to get you, so they don't get me.
One more.
One more, one more.
Oh, all right. And a perfect job.
move into items for action. I will turn it over to Ms. Cobbler, the manager, the general manager of Corporate Services, to present two sets of accounts. And I'm sorry, Ms. Cobbler, I was looking out at the audience for you. I'm still getting used to having people beside me and not, not way out there. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, your worship, and good evening, members of council. Enclosed are the general revenue fund disbursements for the period of June 17 to 28, 2021. I respectfully recommend that $2,019,188.43 in disbursements be approved, which includes a payment of $389,000 for payroll benefits, payment of $21,000 for costs associated with the East Rural Water Pipeline upgrade, including design for the booster station and pipeline tender package, a payment of $14,000 for the purchase of chemicals for use by the water treatment plant, a payment of $11,000 for the purchase of power line or rest or inventory for the light and power department, payment of $20,000 for costs associated with the yard waste program and the landfill compost program, a payment of $34,000 for costs associated with the Chinook Golf Course Pro Shop contract, payment of $149,000 for costs associated with the Friesen Street Storm Sewer Rehabilitation Project, payment of $25,000 for IT equipment upgrade costs and support for various city facilities, payment of $128,000 for costs associated with the 2021 ash fault patching contract, as well as the Chaplain Street Bridge paving costs, a progress payment of $50,000 for design costs associated with the water treatment plant residual management project, payment of $13,000 for the purchase of Vectoback to be used for mosquito control, payment of $16,000 for labor and equipment costs associated with the downtown electrical conversion project, payment of $749,000 for policing costs for the quarter ended March 31, 2021, payment of $14,000 for costs associated with the regional landfill study, payment of $60,000 for costs associated with the storm sewer manhole rehabilitation project at various locations, payment of $40,000 for east landfill operations and scale house contract for June, as well as the west landfill operations for the month of May, a payment of $31,000 for the purchase and delivery of gravel for use by streets and transportation at various locations, and finally, a payment of $21,000 for the for the supply and installation of a flat deck and toolboxes for a truck used by the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Ms. Cobbler. Counsel, I'll be looking for a motion.
Your Worship, I'd be happy to move that we approve the disbursements in the sum of two million nineteen thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-three cents for the period of June seventeenth to June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Counselor Christensen. A second, or Counselor Friesen?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Appreciate that. Now, are there any comments or questions on any of these accounts from anyone? Counselor Christensen, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a couple for clarification. The twenty-one thousand for the East Rural Water Pipeline, those are costs that are passed along to the end users?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And the fourteen thousand for the regional landfill study, is the city of Swift Current the only one funding this study or is it funded by some of the other communities in the area?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Christensen. The regional landfill study actually was funded by a grant from the SUMA organization. So they covered the cost of that study for the, for the region.
Is that all, Counselor Christensen? Thank you. Any other, any other questions? If not, moved by Counselor Christensen and seconded by Counselor Friesen. All those in favor, please raise your hand. These accounts have been passed. Ms. Cobbler, Ms. Cobbler, please proceed with your next set of accounts.
Thank you, Your Worship. Enclosed are the general revenue fund disbursements for the period of June twenty-ninth to July ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. I respectfully recommend that five million two hundred thirty thousand four hundred and nine dollars and eighty-nine cents in disbursements be approved, which includes a payment of two hundred fifteen thousand for payroll benefits, payments of six hundred twenty thousand and three million five hundred seventy-three thousand for taxes collected on behalf of school supporters, payment of three hundred thousand for the purchase of energy, payment of twenty thousand for power costs in city facilities outside of our franchise area, three payments of ten thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars for disbursements related to the city's SGI rebate donation, payments of twenty-seven thousand and ten thousand for the purchase of chemicals for use by the water treatment plant, payment of fifteen thousand for chain link fence repair and replacement at various community services, parks and facilities, payment of twelve thousand for the supply and installation of topsoil at the bike park, as well as ground preparation for the softball batting cage, payment of one hundred forty thousand for costs associated with the crawler camera equipment, payment of twenty-five thousand for costs associated with the Chinook Golf Course Pro Shop contract, payment of forty-two thousand for IT equipment upgrades and support costs for equipment installed at various city facilities, payment of ten thousand for the purchase of pump equipment to be installed in the irrigation pond at Elmwood Golf Course, which is fully recoverable from a third party, payment of twenty-five thousand for costs associated with the two thousand twenty-one asphalt patching contract, and finally, a payment of twenty-three thousand for design costs associated with the downtown intersection improvement, Chinook pathway expansion, neighborhood number five concept plan and the two thousand twenty-one road program.
Thank you, Ms. Cobbler. Counsel, I'll be looking for a motion.
Your Worship, I'll move the amount of five million two hundred thirty thousand four hundred nine dollars and eighty-nine cents in disbursements for the period of June twenty-ninth, July the ninth, be approved.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. A second, or?
I'll second, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Schweitzer. I'm sure you two are just playing this game to see if I can mess up the Ryans here. Great. Are there any questions or comments from anybody here with these accounts? Go ahead, Counselor Lewis.
Thanks, Your Worship. From time to time, I like to pick out a couple of these things and just try to explain them a little bit for the public. And one of those things in this case that really stand out is, you know, this is a large amount of disbursements being approved in this report, you know, five point two plus million dollars. And of that, just under four point two million dollars is going, is being collected by the city of Swift Current, but not staying within the city of Swift Current as an organization. It's being funded over to the two different levels that handle school divisions' work. So in one case, it's the Minister of Finance for the public school divisions and that's just over three and a half million dollars in this period, or a little better than four point three million dollars to date in this year. And then the other portion of that in this period as well is six hundred nineteen thousand plus dollars, which is going to Holy Trinity Roman Catholic School Division. And year-to-date, that's just over, just under eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, you know, I think it's important that we sort of look at these things in the context of where these funds go because there are lots of things going on in these reports and it's easy to look at them and it's easy just to say, yeah, that's a big number, but man, this is a city and it's expensive to run, which is true. Utilities cost a lot of money to run, you know, if you want, if you want your problems to disappear when you push the plunger on the toilet, that's not free. And if you want potable water to come out of your tap when you turn the faucet, that's not free either. But that's not what a lot of these funds are for. A lot of these funds are collected by the city of Swift Current and then remitted over to either the provincial government or to the Roman Catholic School Division. So in this report, yeah, it's, it's a lot of money, but, you know, just under eighty-one percent of that amount is going to another level of government that we simply are the collection agent for. We don't, we don't get to keep any of that. We don't, at least if I'm not mistaken, there's no sort of collection fee that city of Swift Current gets as, as, as you know, doing this, this good work for, for the benefit of the school divisions. And I'm, I'm not saying it's necessarily wrong, I'm just letting people know that when we collect these funds, we get to do the work to collect it and then we get to send it to a different level of government to do what they do with it. You know, similarly, we've got another one here, a big number, just under three hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of energy. Well, we buy that from SAS Power. And the city of Swift Current, our light and power utility, has to make, has to get our energy from somewhere. We don't have a plant that produces energy. There's not a nuclear power plant on the south side. You know, we don't have gas wells that are producing energy for us. We don't have a coal-fired plant somewhere. You know, we have to get that, that energy from somewhere. So the way that it works in Saskatchewan is that SAS Power has monopoly on the production of power. We have no choice, we buy it from SAS Power. When we buy it from SAS Power, you have to almost think about it being like a store. We put it in inventory and then we resell it to people through Light and Power Utility and that's what you see on your power bills. And the policy always has been, at least as long as I've been on council, that, that the sale of those, that energy to the end user, which is us as light and power customers in the city of Swift Current, would be at the same rate that you would get it from SAS Power. So, you know, there's, there's lots of things going on in these, in these reports. I just wanted to pick out a couple of the top-line ones that we see a bit more repeatedly because I think it's important that from time to time, we talk about them and make sure that people in the public sort of appreciate what's going on with these funds. Because, as I said, we're not talking about small numbers. Thanks for indulging me, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. I think next time, I'm going to make my comments first because I was going to comment about the school taxes. We've had, we've had many with the taxes being levied this year. Many people have had an increase in taxes. And one of the other things I wanted to point out, we do collect taxes on behalf of the province and the Roman Catholic School Division, but also there is an eight and a half percent increase in the public taxes this year, on the public school taxes. And many people, I received a letter the other day complaining about their taxes increased by a hundred and fifty dollars. And when I checked into it, it was actually almost all school taxes. And, but we're the ones collecting, so we get labeled with it. And that, that number of over five million dollars, over four of that was, was collected on behalf of someone else and we do not get a commission. I wish, you know, even just like two percent, right? Maybe we could talk to the province about that. Anyway, any other questions from any other counselors? If not, this motion has been moved by Counselor Lewis and seconded by Counselor Schweitzer. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This motion is carried. Thank you. The next three reports will be presented by the general manager of Infrastructure and Operations. Mr. Minkin, please proceed with your first report.
Good evening, Your Worship and members of council. This first report deals with Lift Station Number Seven Force Main Installation. Lift Station Number Seven currently services the residential areas of Cypress Point and a portion of the Centennial subdivision. Sanitary flows from these locations are pumped to the lagoon through a force main that is shared with Lift Station Number Twelve. These two lift stations pump to a location near the Hillcrest Cemetery where they join and share a three hundred millimeter or twelve-inch force main to Lagoon Salee. Number Twelve has greater flows and therefore the pumps at Number Seven need to fight against the flows of Number Twelve. The pumps at Number Seven do not have the capacity to overcome the pressure in the force main when Number Twelve is operating. Consequently, Number Seven can only pump when Number Twelve is not operating. Although not ideal, this configuration works with current flows. As the sanitary flows increase from the continued development of the contribution areas of Cypress Point, South Monroe, and the water treatment plant residuals, the system will no longer be able to operate in this configuration. AECOM conducted a feasibility study completed in two thousand and twenty, which provided recommendations to solve the issue. The recommended solution is to install approximately six hundred and thirty-five meters, twenty-one hundred feet, of two hundred millimeter or eight-inch force main from Number Seven to a manhole near Ford Field where the sewage then flows to Number Twelve, resulting in Number Twelve having a dedicated force main to the lagoon. The new force main runs within the right-of-way of Memorial Drive and will not require any highway crossings. Will also provide partial redundancy as the existing shared force main can be utilized as a bypass if needed during times of maintenance. A tender was advertised on SAS Tenders and the city's website from June eleventh to June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, for the supply and installation of the force main and related works. Two contractors submitted bids. Neither bid was from a local contractor. KMS Construction of Tuxford, Saskatchewan was a successful bidder. KMS has experience on similar large jobs and has successfully completed work within the city of Swift Current. Their bid of three hundred and nineteen thousand, ten percent contingency included, PST included, and GST excluded, was within the two thousand and twenty-one capital budget amount and was the lowest bid. The capital budget amount of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this project is broken down as follows. The construction costs were four hundred and ninety thousand and the engineering and design-related costs were sixty thousand. It is therefore respectfully recommended that council awards the contract for the supply and installation of the force main and related works at Lift Station Number Seven to KMS Construction Limited of Tuxford, Saskatchewan, based on unit pricing to a total upset fee of three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, ten percent contingency included, PST included, and GST excluded, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the said contract.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin. Counsel, I'll be looking for a motion. Go ahead, Counselor Friesen.
Your Worship, I'll move that we award the contract for the supply and installation of the force main and related works at Lift Station Number Seven to KMS Construction Limited of Tuxford, Saskatchewan, based on unit pricing to a total upset fee of three hundred and nineteen thousand, which includes ten percent contingency and PST and GST excluded, and that yourself and city clerk be authorized to sign the said contract.
Thank you very much, Counselor Friesen. A second, or?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Schweitzer. Now, are there any questions or comments on this? Counselor Lewis, go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. I'm just a simple guy, but I just wanted to make sure that I'm confirming this here. So our bid is three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars and of that, in the budget, the construction costs were, were budgeted at four ninety. So we're fairly significantly under budget in this case or is there more that I'm not picking up on here?
No, you're, you're absolutely correct, Counselor Lewis. The, the bid is, is substantially below the budgeted construction costs.
Well, that's good news. Thank you.
Thank you. And if, if I could, I know it's below construction costs, but I know the, the start of the project over at the water treatment plant was slightly over. So does this kind of counteract that or do we, are we still a little bit to the good there, Mr. Minkin?
We're probably still a little to the good. We're still waiting on the last component of the residuals project, which is, which is the pipeline. But this is really good news in relation to the pipeline for the residuals project, being this pricing coming in this way.
Thank you very much. Counselor Wall, I see you making a motion. Go ahead.
Yeah, there you go. I'm looking at this map and it's kind of, anyways, the little yellow line there, is that what we're putting, is that what we're doing there?
On the third...
On the last page.
On the third map, the red, the red line moving south from the end of the yellow line to the green line is, is the six hundred and thirty-five meters that's being installed.
Okay. Thank you.
And one more comment, if I may, if no one else is going to talk. I understand that they may do this with directional boring, is that correct? So we're not going to have an open ditch along Number Four Highway?
That is, that is correct. Very pleased that, that directional drilling on this project actually came in cheaper than, than open trenching. So this is a very good sign for the future that that technology is, is happening and it, it benefits us in a lot of ways. We don't have an open trench in a, in a congested urban area and our, our restoration will be much easier because there won't be any surface disruption.
Yeah, I, I thought that was really good when I heard that today, so I just wanted to point that out. If there's no other questions or comments, this motion has been moved by Counselor Friesen and seconded by Counselor Schweitzer. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This motion is passed. Mr. Minkin, please proceed with your next report.
Thank you. This, this report deals with the R-seven snow blower replacement. Transportation Services Streets and Roadways Department has three snow blowers used in a rotation for winter snow removal from city streets. The R-seven unit, a two thousand and four Sikard twenty-two-hundred M snow blower, has had, has seen several repairs to both the mechanical and frame due to fatigue and wear. The R-seven replacement was identified in the two thousand and twenty capital budget at one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, as per the equipment replacement schedule. The replacement budget was based on a single-stage snow blower, similar to the units the city has purchased in the past. The specification developed for the replacement was based on a two-stage unit. Based on experience with the two-stage unit purchased for the airport, there are financial and operational advantages with this type of equipment. The single, the single-stage units are prone to plug-ups, which take time to clear, resulting in lost productivity and additional costs when using contract trucks. The two-stage unit also moves a higher volume of snow, resulting in faster cleaning times and reducing costs. The two-stage unit will also be able to throw snow further, allowing for faster clearing of roads when there is no, where there is room to, to throw snow. On June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, a request for proposals was posted on SAS Tenders and the city website and closed on July eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Three submissions were received, with all companies being outside of Saskatchewan. The lowest-priced bid and highest-scoring submission was from Industrial Machine Limited of Atchison, Alberta, on a two thousand and twenty-one RPM two, two-one-seven snow thrower, snow blower. The specific unit met or exceeded all aspects of the tender requirements. One requirement was that the machine has the capacity to blow eighteen hundred tons of snow per hour. Our existing machine has a capacity of one thousand tons per hour, so this is an eighty percent improvement capacity. Delivery will be made within thirty days of the receipt of the order. The unit comes with a one-year or fifteen hundred hour warranty and a two-year or three thousand hour warranty on the engine. The additional funds required for this purchase will be allocated from the surplus in the chargeable equipment replacement fund reserve. It is therefore respectfully recommended that council approves the supply and delivery of the two thousand and twenty-one RPM two-one-seven snow blower from Industrial Machine Limited of Atchison, Alberta, for the sum of one hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars, PST included, GST excluded, to be funded from the chargeable equipment reserve.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin. Counsel, I'll be looking for a motion.
Your Worship, I move that council approves the supply and delivery of a two thousand and twenty-one RPM two-one-seven snow blower from Industrial Machine Limited of Atchison, Alberta, for the sum of one hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars, PST included, GST excluded, to be funded from the chargeable equipment reserve.
Thank you, Counselor Schweitzer.
I will second that, Your Worship.
Appreciate that, Counselor Wall. Any questions or comments on, on this particular report? Go ahead, Counselor Friesen.
Just to comment, Your Worship, I see that delivery is going to be made within thirty days of the order. I certainly hope we won't be needing this piece of equipment for many days, like maybe, maybe a hundred and twenty days or something before we actually need it. So anyway, that's all I have.
You have a question, Counsel Schweitzer?
I'm kind of excited to see this thing in action, actually. My question is just with the R7 that we're replacing. What's going to happen with that?
There was no trade-in value for the R7, so it will be placed in our regular annual auction for sale or our regular bid process for sale of a surplus equipment.
Thank you. Counsel Pless?
Thanks, your worship. Thanks for the report. Mr. Minkin, so a couple things here. The $130,000 capital budget that we had was sort of an estimate for a single-stage snow blower. What do you figure... I mean, did we even look, I guess, at the cost of one of those? What do we figure the cost would actually come in at for a single stage at this point?
We didn't expect that, but in preparation for the 2020 budget, we would have got that pricing, so...
Would have been about $130,000.
We would assume that it would be around that $130,000.
Okay. Well, I was assuming that too, but I thought I better ask and not just assume. But I mean, the 80% improvement in capacity certainly seems well worth the extra little bit of money in terms of the capital. But the other thing that I guess that caught my interest was you figured there would be some cost difference as well on the operation side of things. Do you have any idea sort of what we should expect from a savings on that side of the ledger?
I mean, that will be variable, so it would be savings in contract tracking as well as savings in a limited amount of overtime. But that would be pretty tough to estimate based on the way that our snow budget fluctuates each year.
Yeah. And I know being around last October and November, when we had to make use of this, the extra $10,000 at that point in time certainly would have probably seen us some savings, even in one-year event like that. So I'm in favor of the report. I think it makes a lot of sense, and thanks for thinking outside of the box on it.
I have a question here, Mr. Minkin. The warranty period, one year from the time we receive it, and is it either one year or 1,500 hours, or either-or? And I guess if we receive it in 35 days, maybe we shouldn't receive it for 95 days, so we have... I guess it really doesn't matter because we only have one season to go through, but how does this warranty work?
You're right in that it is one year or the hours, and I'm not sure when the clock starts ticking on that, whether it's when it goes into service or when we receive it, but I will find out.
Well, it'd just be nice if we could have like four months this winter and four months next, and I know that's not how it's going to work, but the one-year and the two-year warranty sounds good, but we really only have one season to use it in, and so they're really only giving us a six-month warranty. The hours are what matter. Any other questions or comments? If not, this motion was moved by Counsel Schweitzer and seconded by Counsel Wall. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This motion has passed. Mr. Minkin, please proceed with your final report.
Thank you. This report deals with the SGI Provincial Traffic Safety Fund grant. In January of this year, Saskatchewan Government Insurance, SGI, announced a funding opportunity to promote and improve traffic safety. The Provincial Traffic Safety Fund grant program provides up to $100,000 to municipalities to support traffic safety awareness and reduce the frequency and severity of injuries and fatalities. In response to this intake opportunity, the city applied for improvements of two pedestrian crossings entering Riverside and Riverdene Parks. These two crossings will receive enhancements to increase visibility by installing push-activated rectangular rapid flashing beacons, RRFBs. In addition to the RRFBs, a curb extension will be constructed at the South Railway Riverside Park Crossing to allow for improved visibility and a shortened crossing distance. In June, administration was notified that the application was successful. The funding contribution includes $49,000 from SGI for all the material and concrete installation. The city's contribution will be the labor to install the RRFBs and signage. The completion for this project is dependent on the delivery of the RRFB systems. It is anticipated construction will be completed by the end of October with the installation of the RRFBs to be completed by light and power. It is therefore respectfully recommended that council approves the pedestrian crossing improvement project to be included in the 2021 capital budget in the amount of $49,000 to be fully funded through the Provincial Traffic Safety Fund Grant Program.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin. Counsel, I'll be looking for a motion. Go ahead, Counsel Friesen.
Your worship, I'll move that we approve the pedestrian crossing improvement project to be included in the 2021 capital budget in the amount of $49,000 to be fully funded through the Provincial Traffic Safety Fund Grant Program.
Thank you, Counsel Friesen. Seconder?
I will second that, your worship.
Thank you. Counsel Christensen, any questions or comments? Counsel Friesen, go ahead.
Again, not really a question, just a comment and a thank you, I guess, to SGI. I think just looking at these two locations and being familiar with them, I know both could use some enhanced safety. And so I know up along North Hill Drive there, going down to Riverdene Park, especially in the winter when there's tobogganing and so ongoing happening there, this will be great to have going. And at the south side, it's the same thing. There's a lot of pedestrians there, and there's a lot of traffic. So thanks to SGI for providing the program, and I'm looking forward to seeing enhanced safety for our citizens in these two locations, and thank you, Mr. Minkin, for putting it together.
Thank you, Counsel Friesen. Counsel Schweitzer, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I have a feeling that this is going to pass, but in the event that counselors might be on the fence about it, I really want to passionately advocate for the one on the south side especially. At times, I've walked that crosswalk twice a day, and just for whatever reason, people don't stop there. And I don't think it's me personally, because I've seen it with other people too. And you know, with South Railway Street...
Are you sure, Counsel?
Well, maybe.
Counsel Schweitzer?
I know. I got to look in on some of this stuff. But yeah, just, you know, South Railway, it begins with that dip down the street right by the fairgrounds, and people get a heavy foot on that street. And you get the sun setting in the western sky, and with increased activity at Southside Park with tennis, pickleball, beach volleyball, Shakespeare, disc golf, minor football, and soccer, and there's a lot of traffic flow there, and there's only going to be more in the coming years with all these activities in that Southside Park. And I feel like this could potentially save a life just with that intersection, and sometimes people being in a hurry after waiting at a train, so absolutely a no-brainer on this one to support it.
Yes, that intersection or the crosswalk is at an angle also. I mean, it's kind of got everything going against it. I'm in the same boat. I've been almost clipped there a couple of times, especially coming across to the south and having to look over that shoulder towards the cars coming from the east. But anyway, Counsel Christensen, you wanted to say something?
Thank you, your worship. I'm also in favor of this. It's a must, especially at that intersection, at that crosswalk. However, I'm just wondering about the bump out right there. That street is well-used by semis as far as hauling grain to the elevators, cattle liners to the packers along there, or to the pulse plant and stuff like that. I'm just worried that we're going to narrow... We can't narrow it too much so that the oncoming traffic coming into a semi could be an issue either, so I just have a concern about that at that one spot.
Thank you for that question. So the bump out there is... If the drawing doesn't show it accurately, the bump out is no further out than the guardrail, so it's the same width as the street is today.
Thank you for your answer there, Mr. Minkin. If there's no other questions or comments, this was moved by Counsel Friesen and seconded by Counsel Christensen. All those in favor, please raise your hands. This motion has passed. Our next two reports will be presented by our General Manager of Community Services. Please proceed with your first report, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, your worship and members of council. The subject of this report is Treaty Four and Métis National Flag additions. The Saskatchewan Office of the Treaty Commissioner, OTC, is working to support a provincial movement for truth and reconciliation in the treaty territory of Saskatchewan. The OTC uses its stature as a neutral provincial facilitator to encourage honest conversations about the nature of successful reconciliation, both within the public at large and by bringing together influential leaders from all walks of life. The city of Swift Current operates on Treaty Four land and land of the Métis Nation. The Swift Current and Area Truth and Reconciliation Committee is working with the city of Swift Current to conduct a ceremonial land recognition event on September 27th, 2021, prior to the first National Truth and Reconciliation Day to be held September 30th, 2021. The recent findings of unmarked graves in British Columbia and Saskatchewan have come to the attention of the nation, with many wanting to work with the indigenous people in solidarity. Consultation with the indigenous knowledge keepers and other indigenous members in our community is taking place in July and August of 2021. The Truth and Reconciliation Committee has invited five to 10 indigenous knowledge keepers along with other members of the indigenous community from Nekonit First Nation, Swift Current, and southwest Saskatchewan. A proclamation request has been submitted to declare September 26th to October 2nd, 2021, as Truth and Reconciliation Week in the city of Swift Current. In respect of and honoring of treaty relationships, the city of Swift Current Flag Court, a welcoming feature to the downtown along Central Avenue North would be increased by two flags, the Treaty Four flag and the Métis flag. Therefore, it is respectfully recommended that council approves an additional sum of $12,000 to the 2021 capital budget to provide for the installation of two flag poles to fly the Treaty Four and the Métis flags proudly with the existing flags displayed at the city of Swift Current Flag Court, and that funds for this budget item be reallocated from the Safe Restart Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Counsel, I'll be looking for two separate motions. Can I please get a mover on the first motion?
Absolutely, your worship. I move that council approves an additional sum of $12,000 to the 2021 capital budget to provide for the installation of two flag poles to fly the Treaty Four and the Métis flags proudly with the existing flags displayed at the city of Swift Current Flag Court.
Thank you, Counsel Christensen. A seconder?
I will second that, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Pless. Are there any comments or questions on this from anyone? Counsel Wall?
Yes, I just want to know if we've decided on the location where we're going to put these flags in the flag court?
Thank you very much for the question, Counsel Wall. We've actually looked at the location, and we're going to adjust them in with the grouping that is currently right there. They won't be put on the very end because they said it would have taken us a lot of trees that we would have had to take them out of there. So we've had actually our manager of parks look at it, between him and Mr. Minkin, and they've come up with a really good solution to put the two flag poles there. Kind of in the middle, it's kind of hard to explain, so...
Counsel Friesen?
Thanks, your worship, and I guess thanks to the Truth and Reconciliation Committee for the work that they're doing in this area, and I think it's a great thing for our council to be able to support them in this way and to be able to proudly fly the Treaty Four and the Métis Nation flags. So I'm looking forward to hopefully everyone supporting this and those flags flying up on our flag court.
Thank you, Counsel Friesen. If there's no other questions or comments on that, moved by Counsel Christensen and seconded by Counsel Pless, all those in favor, this motion has passed. Counsel, I will now be looking for someone to move the second motion.
Your worship, I will move that funds for this budget item be reallocated from the Safe Restart Funds.
Thank you, Counsel Schweitzer.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Friesen. Any questions or comments on moving these funds from the Safe Restart? If not, moved by Counsel Schweitzer and seconded by Counsel Friesen, all those in favor, this motion has passed. Thank you. Mr. Jones, will you please proceed with your last report?
Thank you, your worship and members of council. The subject of this report is Golf Cart Operating Lease Replacement, Chinook Golf Course. The Chinook Golf Course leases golf carts on a four- or five-year lease term and is based on cart usage and battery life. The last lease term was 2017 to 2021. The Chinook Golf Course placed proposals for a four- or five-year lease on 45 electric 48-volt carts and one gas-operated Marshall cart. Carts are to be delivered to the city of Swift Current Chinook Golf Course by March 1st, 2022, and removed on October 31st, 2026 on a five-year lease. During the term of this lease, if a cart is down for more than 48 hours due to mechanical failure, a loaner cart deemed acceptable by the city is to be rid at no charge. The payment schedule will include six payments per year due on the first day of each month, May, June, July, August, September, and October throughout the term of the lease. Each cart is to have the following: canopies, fold-down windshield, sweater basket, wheel covers, numbers on the front and rear of the cart, color options minimum of two, a charger and specification of warranty on the carts. Proposals closed on June 22nd, 2021, with three proposals being received. On a five-year lease, proposals range from $219,420 to $312,930. The lowest annual rate was $43,884, with the highest being $62,586. Oak Creek Golf and Turf of Saskatoon, Saskatchewan scored the highest in evaluations and provided the lowest bid. Oak Creek Golf and Turf has been the Yamaha Golf Cart distributor since 1990, has been in business since 1969, and has been the provider of leased golf carts at the Chinook Golf Course since 2014. Therefore, it is respectfully recommended that the five-year golf cart operating lease of 46 2022 golf carts be awarded to Oak Creek Golf and Turf of Saskatoon, Saskatchewan, at an annual rate of $43,884 plus GST per year commencing on May 1st, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Counsel, I'll be looking for a motion.
Your worship, I will move that the five-year golf cart operating lease of 46 2022 golf carts be awarded to Oak Creek Golf and Turf of Saskatoon, Saskatchewan, at an annual rate of $43,884 plus GST per year commencing on May 1st, 2022.
Thank you, Counsel Pless. A seconder?
I will second that, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Wall. I appreciate that. Any questions or comments on this of Mr. Jones? I do have one question. Is this slightly less than what we were paying last term? Is that what I remember reading something about that, or is it about the same?
Thank you very much for the question. We were pleasantly surprised that the rate that we were able to receive this time is cheaper than it was last time. Originally, we had looked at extending it for one year because the availability of golf carts this year coming out of COVID was extremely tight, and we decided that we would put on... That's why we decided on putting a request out for tenders on for either a four- or five-year lease, and we're pleasantly surprised that we come in under, quite a bit under, probably about $8,000 under the last time.
I was... Thank you, Mr. Jones. I was quite happy to hear that also, especially with COVID. I mean, and most of us in COVID, things are just seeming to skyrocket, and here we have one that actually came down a little bit, which is good for all of us. Any other questions or comments? If not, this was... Motion was moved by Counsel Pless and seconded by Counsel Wall. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. This motion has passed. Next, I will ask our CAO to present the additional report that was added to the agenda at the beginning of this meeting. Mr. Marcus? Got to find you here. Over there. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. The subject of this report is Bardell Investments Limited Debt Settlement Agreement. In 2016, the city of Swift Current began providing services along Adam Street as the property on the north side of the street wished to proceed with servicing. Since then, the city has been unable to reach a servicing agreement for servicing the south side of the street. The pro-rata share of services has been outstanding since that time. The property owner, the mayor, and the administration have been working to come to an agreement based on various proposals from the owner. The current proposal that was passed at a previous council meeting for a partial cash settlement and property in lieu of cash is now changed. Negotiations after that council meeting centering around restrictions on the property has led to a new offer of cash settlement for the outstanding debt. The owner will now pay $400,000 cash for their share of the services. The city will then re-own the property to R3 upon payment of $25,000 with the balance to be received upon acceptance of application for the subdivision. The owner is responsible for bringing the land out of the 1,500 floodway, and a future agreement for servicing will be made when lot plans and subdivision are finalized. Administration believes that this will satisfy the outstanding amount for the servicing of the lots and provides for future development in this area. The owner has indicated that he would like to name the development Creekside Estates. Recommendation, then, is we respectfully recommend that council approves rescinding resolution number one... resolution number 139, being the agreement with J&amp;P Bardell Investments Limited, for the transfer of Block Three to the city of Swift Current, and the payment of one-hundred-thousand and four equal installments as settlement of services as presented at the June twenty-eighth, 2021 council meeting. And that council approves the new debt settlement agreement with J&amp;P Bardell Investments Limited, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the set agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Counsel, I will be looking again for two separate motions on this. Can I have a mover on this first motion, please? Go ahead, Counsel Christensen.
I move that council approves rescind, a council approves rescinding resolution number 139, being the agreement with J&amp;P Bardell Investments Limited, for the transfer of Block Three to the city of Swift Current, and the payment of one-hundred-thousand dollars in four equal installments as settlement of services as presented at the June twenty-eighth, 2021 council meeting.
Thank you, Counsel Christensen. A seconder?
I'll second, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Schweitzer. Any comments or questions on this, rescinding this motion? If seeing none, this motion has been moved by Counsel Christensen and seconded by Counsel Schweitzer. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This motion has passed. Counsel, I will now be looking for someone to move the second motion.
Your worship will be happy to move that council approves a new debt settlement agreement with J&amp;P Bardell Investments LTD, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the set agreement.
Thank you, Counsel Pless. A seconder?
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Freezin. Any questions or comments on the second motion? Seeing none, moved by Counsel Pless and seconded by Counsel Freezin. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This motion has passed. Now, moving down the agenda, there will be no reports for information. However, with the amendment to the agenda, we will proceed with the bylaw reading. Now, we'll see if I can do this right here. This, the second reading. Mayor, at this time, there is a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw number twenty-four, 2014, by rezoning areas in the northeast quarter, thirty-one, fifteen, thirteen west to the third meridian, from RC Reserve Commercial District to R3 High Density Multi-Unit Dwelling Residential District, C3 Highway Commercial District, and PW Parkway District, and adjust any adjacent, if I can get the word right, and adjust any adjacent district boundaries as needed. And I will call upon the city clerk to present the second reading.
Moved by Counsel Pless and seconded by Counsel Freezin, that bill number eighteen, 2016, be given a second reading.
Council members, are you in favor of the second reading?
That bill number eighteen, 2016, read a second time this twenty-sixth day of July, 2021.
This bylaw is now open for discussion and debate at this time. I will call upon Counsel Pless. Counsel Pless, please.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I'll just speak about it very briefly, as we've had some other discussions about it in the past. But just a little bit of history, I guess, to, to bring us all up to speed. Back in 2016, there was a, an area structure plan that amended that area to allow for a mix of residential and commercial uses within that particular development area. The land has been previously subdivided, and at that time, a notice was put on the, the subdivided parcels as well, that, that, that sort of limited the development that could happen in that area. And those sorts of things involve the fact that, that this area is located in what's called a designated flood hazard area under our zoning bylaws. So the purpose of this rezoning is really just to finalize rezoning that's been on hold pending an execution of the servicing agreement for the, for the, or the servicing agreement and payment of the cost to date. So the purpose here is just, is just to change this from where it's currently zoned as a holding district for future commercial development, to the new zone, which will accommodate high-volume commercial uses immediately next to the Canadian Tire Development Area, and a range of residential densities anywhere from single-family to multi-unit dwellings along Adam Street. The area being rezoned will still need to satisfy those flood hazard area development conditions that were registered on title in the previous subdivision I had mentioned. And before any of the new construction on that area can happen, or further subdivision of land can, can be permitted, people need to, to satisfy those conditions. So just very briefly, you know, again, if you're located within that designated flood hazard area, you'll have to meet or exceed the safe building elevation as specified on the title. And to do that, it's, it's a, it's not something that the city just invents. These rules are, are brought to us by the Saskatchewan Water Security Agency, and they're based on hydro technical studies conducted by Goldern Associates LTD. So any new development in that area will have to require the developer to obtain a new geotechnical investigation report prepared by a qualified professional in the area, and then to bring it to the city for approval. That, in a nutshell, is a fairly lengthy rezoning application, and hopefully we can get this over the finish line. Thanks, your worship.
I definitely would like it over the finish line tonight. Any other comments or questions? Counsel Pless, go ahead, or Pless, Counsel Freezin. Yeah, he was, he was already up.
Yes, yes. Well, I just, I'm very happy to see this proceeding, and I see that John and Pat are in the audience tonight. So just want to thank you for working with our mayor and admin team, and for getting this resolution, or getting this resolved, I guess, or, or moving forward. And I really do like the name Creekside Estates, and I look forward to whatever the new development will be there. So I'm wishing you all the best in that development.
Thank you, Counsel Freezin. Any other comments? If not, Madam Clerk, please proceed with the motion for the third reading of this bylaw.
Moved by Counsel Pless and seconded by Counsel Freezin, that bill number eighteen, 2016, be given a third reading and finally passed this twenty-sixth day of July, 2021.
Can I add at last? This has been on the papers ever since I got elected, so it's nice to see it done. Thank you very much. Now, we do not have any items under unfinished business. This brings us to new business, counsel. I'm looking for a motion to receive and file the items as listed from the various boards and committees of council members.
Your worship, I'll move as such.
Thank you, Counsel Schweitzer. A seconder?
I will second that, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Christensen. Any comments about any of these committee reports, or the, the community policing report or anything? If not, moved by Counsel Schweitzer and seconded by Counsel Christensen. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This motion has passed. There are no items listed under communications or items to be discussed in camera. We will continue with reports of council members and inquiries, and I will open the floor to council for questions or comments for administrations or statements they wish to make. Well, I'm going to look to my, over here, Counsel Schweitzer, you go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, your worship. First off, it's, it's great to be doing this meeting. Everyone here, shoulder to shoulder, maskless. Our, our first meeting in a post-COVID world. I apologize to our CAO and Counsel Christensen. I'll buy some nicer cologne for the next meeting, as they've had to spend this time in close proximity to me. I just want to give a shout out to everybody involved with the Great Southwest Shakespeare Festival. It's, it's great that people are able to, to come together again and, and be entertained in entertainment venues. And I know the Gord McCall and his crew have put in a ton of work over the past few weeks in getting ready for the Great Southwest Shakespeare Festival. And from what I've heard, it's, it's a great show underneath that big saddle dome-like tent that's in Riverside Park there. So I just want to give props to that crew. And I want to give a shout out, I've, I've mentioned this group a few times in, in past council meetings, the Swift Current eleven-U fifty-sevens. They are a mosquito-baseball juggernaut in our community. And I know that it's not all about winning at this stage, it's learning the fundamentals and, and having fun, especially in a post-pandemic world. But that crew has become one of the top eleven-U baseball teams in the whole province. They, they had a tough schedule this past weekend in Saskatoon. They made it to the semifinals before bowing out, but I think they've only lost two or three games in league play and have won sixteen. And they're doing so with seven kids who have never played baseball before. And they've played the majority of their games on the road as well. So just props to Coach Carnahan and, and his team, which is representing Swift Current very well in the green and orange.
Thank you, Counsel Schweitzer. It's still as nice to win when you're playing, whether you're old or young, and someone like Mr. Jones beats you at disc golf or something like that. It's, it's nice for him to win, but, that's right, nice for me to let him win. Counsel Wall, did you have some comments or questions?
Yes, I definitely question for the general manager. I can't read what is written in there. For infrastructure, anyway, first of all, we need to fly swatter here. We have flies, but flying around here, fucking. Anyways, the, with all the hot weather and the heat that we have, and the, probably excess use of water, do we water that very closely, and then do we apply restrictions on it after a while?
Thank you for the question, Counsel Wall. We have, we have no concerns. Our water treatment plant has plenty of capacity to, to produce water, and we have no restrictions from the Water Security Agency on, on the use of water. Our, our water usage is well between, well below our contracted level. So we have not, not had to contemplate any, any restrictions to any of our, our water usage.
Thank you for the answer and, and the question, Counsel Wall. Do you want to go ahead there, Counsel Freezin?
Thanks, your worship. I just had a couple of things. First of all, kudos to whoever takes care of all of the planters and the, and the beautiful flowers in our city. They are spectacular this year. So, Mr. Jones, is that your department? Yeah. So if you would pass that on, I've had several comments from people who have really, really enjoyed all the planters and how nice all the flowers look. So thanks for that. Also, I'm with Counsel Schweitzer. It's so good to see all the events happening again. I understand the Bronco Golf Tournament was highly successful. I understand the rodeo that was on this weekend was really successful. And there's lots more to come in August. I know there's all kinds of events. The Eliminators are having their show and shine and, and a fun run. And there's, I don't know, there's so many things, I can't even mention them all. But there's lots coming up, so I encourage people to get out and take part now that, now that we can do it safely. My question is for Mr. Minkin, is regarding Freezin Street and where we're at with that, and when we expect that one to be finished.
Thank you, Counsel Freezin, for the question. Freezin Street is wrapping up. We're hoping we'll be done within the next two weeks. And on checking today, we expect the concrete and paving crews back in town around the middle of August. So that will be one of their first projects to tackle, to get the concrete in, and then, and then pave, pave there. So we're, we're right on, we're right on our schedule with Freezin Street to be done towards the end of August.
Thank you. And while we're talking Freezin Street and paving, so they're going to get the paving and sidewalks there, is that going to impact our pathways? Because I know that they're away right now, and we've had such great comments about the pathways with the last few weeks, the crews have not been in town. So what can you tell us about that, Mr. Minkin?
Sure, thank you. Our, before the crews left, they had made the majority, got the majority of the pathway work done, actually. So we're, we're well ahead of that project. So the work at Freezin Street will not impact the, the work towards getting our pathways done.
Thank you very much. Counsel Pless, I've seen you making a motion for the, Mike?
Well, yeah, I was going to ask about the same thing, but I was going to only ask the serious question after I made the joke about when the Pless Street was going to be finished. Counsel Freezin got a street. I just thought the rest of us should probably, yeah. There might be a Wall Street. There is a Wall Street. I think I've heard of it somewhere. Oh, there you go. Anyways, I was just going to follow up asking about the pathway. So thanks, your worship, for stole my thunder.
You got mine earlier, so we're, we're even on this one tonight. Anything else from anybody? I know it's been a long meeting. I, I do want to say just one more time, and I know it's very nice to be here in a regular meeting and actually have people here, but one more time, I want to say to anybody that's listening that has not had their COVID shot, please just read the news and, and seriously think about why you've chosen not to have it. Because it's very critical for all of us, especially with the new variants coming online, that, that we do, that we do get it. And with that, I, I won't say anything more about that. I do want to remind everybody, well, I want to thank everybody for being patient tonight with this long meeting, because it is the only meeting for July. And our next meeting is on August the twenty-third, and that will be the only meeting in August. And I anticipate that one to possibly also be a long meeting, because there'll be lots of accounts and everything else. But anyway, this now concludes our council meeting for this twenty-sixth day of July, 2021. And I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting. Counsel Wall?
I'll second.
Counsel Schweitzer will second it. All those in favor, thank you for everything.